15 or whatever it is. Tulsa, Oklahoma City, then back.
If he joins after the roll call, he won't be able to vote or anything?
Did you try to text that series?
Yeah, I checked him.
Uh, he says his name's targeting up.
Is he coming straight here from there?
Do you have a copy of the document?
Yeah, I've got it. Forgot one.
Should we go with the copy of the document?
You're saying the same thing you've been telling us last week?
Yeah, yeah.
Ask for it. Hold it up. Put it on the computer. Want to work right on the computer, right?
Didn't work tonight, so.
See all the wood disappeared from that one. It was all off. All of those outside, they do the interior partitions and stuff. I looked through the windows, everything's open.
Is a word inside?
Huh?
Is a word inside?
It's all hooked up as partition.
Every time someone's behind is going to like send them several. Then working inside.
Bring it up.
Yeah.
I forgot to look if we put on.
Oh, I know.
Uh, we can talk about that.
Can't find a copy of the contract. I mean, she got recently. I sent it back here six months ago. Where do you have their approval?
There's some things, there's some things too that I've noticed that if I send it to all of you guys. I'm like sending it eventually so that it applies and then I'll sit as an employee right like now.
I know like when I send pictures, I will.
Yeah, I won't even like send a picture for like random people unless you're gonna.
So if you have a copy, it's on a send it, but it's.
I have looked at the. I couldn't find it from anything. You sent it here.
Well, I just, I didn't get the computer, so.
That's the meaning, my phone. Sometimes it's my phone keeps stopping, sometimes it just disappears. I never was going to confuse anyone. My headwork, my work. I have too much, I had to confuse you in my body. So I killed. And then you have called IT into me. It's always one where you're like fifth page into a something. And I think he hasn't answered that way.
There were so many ghost jams constantly, then finally you give them to change the sensor out and sure enough, you know.
And we're trying to tell them because it keeps showing codes on us. They'll send them, they're like, well, just send us the code. So we didn't send them the code, they told us that that's not even a code which we're looking at.
That's, that's it.
Can you leave mine on the front?
Huh?
Is mine on the front? The highlighted one?
Do you want to get?
No, that's fine.
Are we ready? Level thirty. And she's working. I'm gonna call a public hearing for town Tryon First Baptist Church, one twenty-two North First Street, Tryon, Oklahoma. Seven four eight seven five on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Supposed to be five fifty-five AM, but it's six oh five, so I'm gonna get started. Call the order. Roll call.
Sandy here.
Jenna here.
Nathan here.
Richard here. You said Jim, Jim's not coming. This is the public hearing for the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. Anybody have anything they need to bring up for, for the budget or that we should address? Most of the stuff has already been done. Uh, placed in a public spot where they can see a copy of it.
There was one that was posted at town hall.
Okay.
Actually posted down the door.
There being nothing, we're gonna move on. Return this patient.
Need a commotion, will you join?
A second? Richard, yes.
Does that make you press hands?
That depends. Town Tryon Board of Trustees Special Meeting, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Be six oh seven now. First Baptist Church, one twenty-two North First Street. On the agenda, call the order. Roll call.
Sandy here.
Jenna here.
Nathan here.
Richard here. Consideration, discussion, action on adopting a twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six physical year budget.
Well, they're looking, I have a few questions here. Um, so I noticed that for the police fines, uh, looks like we're budgeting that seventeen percent from what we budgeted last year, but looks like we only collected like a third of that. Am I reading that right?
Yes, as of current.
So.
Because the, the numbers that I got for the, for that, it's only for eleven months.
For the seven thousand dollars?
Yeah, the twenty-three, yeah, that's only for eleven months because that's the data that I had to do the budget with.
Do we need to, to budget seventeen percent over if we didn't even?
Normally what we should, normally what we should have, because we, we would normally have, um, twelve months worth of court, but we didn't because we had to cancel a couple of them. So I was taking those, like everything on out and taking those into account.
And you think we'll actually make that budget number this next year?
I wouldn't be surprised if we did.
Okay. ATV permits, it looks like we're doubling that in the budget from one hundred and fifty dollars for the year to three hundred. Are we expecting twice as many ATVs on the road?
Um, well, we actually have quite a bit of ATVs on the road, but, um, most of them don't have turnouts. So we're trying to put pressure on them to support it.
Uh, revenue interest, where are we getting that interest from?
Is it still on the top line?
Well, yeah, it's on revenues from about six percent, should have gone.
That is off of the, um, the reports, like the quick reports.
Cause there's not accounts that we have that we've made interest on. Like just our bank accounts?
Yeah.
And then I know you answered my question on email, PWA. Why are we putting the water? The public water stuff on the town budget, why isn't that on utility?
Because the town pays the, um, like the salaries and stuff, there's certain things that the town will pay for because how their accounts are set up. And then the PWA will reimburse the town.
Okay. So then out of the general payroll, then what all does that, who all goes to that then?
Uh, the general fund payroll would be like me and, uh, like the town clerk and the code enforcement. And then the code enforcement, um, the code enforcement is actually not included in that, but I still, I still kept them out and then raised it some in case, uh, which just was done before you guys voted to deal away with the code enforcement position at the time. Don't that need to be adjusted?
Well, like, I'd like to still keep, I don't know what you guys think, I'd still like to keep that payroll for the code enforcement there. In case three months from now, we decide, yeah, we really need this, then suddenly we don't have the money in the budget anymore. My thoughts.
Cause it's not gonna be a problem if you over budget on something.
Exactly.
But like you said, if we don't budget for it at all, and then something happens where we have it, then.
Yep.
We have to do amendments and all that stuff.
Um, so it looks like we're giving our librarian a seventeen percent raise.
Um, I, I took on that because most of the timeframe at the library, like the amount that that is covered, it wasn't full time, she was only at fifteen hours a week. Um, I'm taking into account like we went over to the new building, she's gonna have more hours. So her payroll is going to be increased.
Okay. When is, when are you expecting us to move?
I would probably say maybe August, I don't know, it's gonna be a couple months.
They're moving pretty fast. Is there a particular reason why in twenty-three it shows twenty-four hundred dollars on the gas tax?
Because we, uh, our audits have not been done in a while, the, the state is holding the excise taxes. And we will not be getting those until our audits get done.
What exactly is the use tax?
Uh, I'm on partnership. I don't know.
It's a chunk of change.
Cause they have like sales tax and.
I think it's for people who buy things.
There's used, cigarette gas.
And sales, it's like a sales.
Which I can understand, two of them.
No, obviously, yeah.
Our job, definitely. One of the use taxes.
So use taxes for tangible property that's purchased and brought into the store for storage or use or consumption. So you go to Kansas, you buy a car, you bring it home to Tryon, then they're part of the tax that you pay with, and go to the use tax to us. I don't know if a car is a good example of that, but. You know, I was gonna ask, what the total personal services, you had a hundred and twenty-two thousand? I don't know how you got that number, can you walk me through that? About total personnel?
On here? Cause that is the total between, um, the total payroll taxes and the payroll, that's a total of what all that is going to be. That's a total of all that column. And the personnel services down.
Cause if you add the total payroll taxes and the total police payroll, you only have two bold faced ones, you get eighty-seven thousand.
Well, it's not just the bold faced ones.
Right, if you include everything but the bold faced ones, you get a hundred and fifty-four thousand. Include everything together, it's like two hundred and some thousand. Like I couldn't find any way to make those numbers.
It'll be like the, the total payroll taxes will be it, and then down there where the total payroll, payroll is. And then, um, let me see.
I'll see, total payroll.
Total police payroll.
Okay.
And then, which I, I just left that as a payroll for thirty-six thousand, because that's what we're paying, um,
Yep.
the police for their services. And then, I have to get my calculator, but I think the other ten letters as well that should be added in.
The which ones?
Cause it's that whole, the two numbers, right, eleven, fifty-five, twenty-six, eighteen.
Comes a hundred and forty-five thousand. Am I doing this math formula error? How come we're not budgeting for any repairs on the town vehicle? I'm assuming that's for the, uh, the code enforcement truck?
Um, it was Vermont using it. And a couple weeks ago, it was voted to surplus the vehicle.
Surplusing the code enforcement truck?
Lots of code enforcement trucks, uh, top of it. And the code enforcement truck's not being purged, so it.
Even then, you can ask each other, like, can you just say entire?
Yeah, yeah.
Cross, break. Good pair. Yeah, batteries right in there.
And we don't have anything on, we don't have anything down with licensing either. We pay that, that vehicles as a government?
The only time we've ever paid for a tag is when we've listed up our department or whatever, now we assess it, we kind of insert it into our name.
Yeah. So right below the twelve auto expense, we have forty-five hundred for maintenance operations, what all does that include? That's really vague. To them, right under the twelve auto expense?
Fourth line from above.
Right, it's in the same session, the tire, the police, the.
That can be, that could be the, um, definitely the combination of like fuel or like fuel, police cars can be something, police cars, that's why. But it's the combination of all that's listed up there. The fuel, the insurance, like, um, our department would be, uh, our department insurance.
You mean for the total auto expense, right?
Yeah.
What about the one right below, the maintenance and operations, it's like forty-five hundred?
That one, it just depends on fire, they could have to have like replace something in their department, um, like, um, I'm trying to think of the repairs they have, cause they have to do like, uh, buy batteries or entire, I don't think they're all on, on operation.
So shouldn't that not be with the fire maintenance operation, the line right below it?
It falls under both, it kind of depends on what the, like that one is. And that can actually be, um, it can be broke up towards each individual department, but especially with like a police department not being in operation. Um, that's where I just left it there. And like the maintenance, the OSBIPs and all that stuff, that just varies.
So, but the total maintenance operations you have is four hundred dollars. Shouldn't be a lot more than that, since we're talking forty-five hundred dollars for that one line and I have a fire and, what, thirty-two, forty-seven thousand for the complete OSBIPs and everything?
Now, now that one should be, uh, how it's labeled there, it should be.
Should it be the total of everything from total auto expense down, right?
Yeah, cause that one should actually be covered with other maintenance operations on. So that just basically would cover.
Looks like it should be at ten thousand five. If you add up the maintenance operations line, the twelve, the seven, the line, and that, the way. Uh, property insurance, it looks like you haven't budgeted exactly what we budgeted last year, is that not gonna go up when we get the new building?
Uh, it shouldn't, because it's kind of, with OMAC, it's kind of a like the policy. So it shouldn't, uh, what I talked to him last time, he just raised their insurance policies, like six months ago, I think it was. So they shouldn't be covering any of these reasons.
Who are, who's, who is we paying ten grand for?
Um, that is for, I put that in there because we have a current auditor working on two of our years of audits that he has made a deal with the town. That when those two audits get done, that he's going to charge us the same amount.
Okay.
So I'll just do that.
What is the auditing, what?
Our audits that are behind, our regular year.
Just the early book audits?
Yeah.
I didn't know we were doing that.
Yeah.
Like state requires it.
Yeah.
Office supply postal shipping costs, you have three hundred dollars?
Um, on.
Or is that on, part of that on utilities, on nature?
I just increased it a little bit. I just increased it a little bit from what, uh, that's just on the outside, because usually the only postal policy I have is like certified, like certified letters and stuff, or stamps, and I don't have to have as much postal stuff on stuff.
And ICID is all thirteen hundred.
So I just increased it a little bit before we step off.
And ICID is all thirteen hundred.
So I just increased it a little bit before we step off.
Uh, the cell phone, we only budgeted five hundred for it, is that?
I only have one cell phone.
So we pay a hundred and thirty-seven dollars?
Well, it kind of varies each, uh, each month, because there's some months that we only get like, um, eighteen dollars for that. It has, we, certain times of the year we get discounts, we're being, it's actually under a police, uh, or utility, uh, like account or whatever.
Okay.
So it's through eighteen, but it's for like, um, responders and stuff like that.
Yeah, cause I look at them like, that should be like sixteen, seventy, I don't remember what. Do you have personnel training, I'm assuming that's personnel training?
Yeah.
Is three hundred dollars enough for you guys?
Are, are most of your classes like fifty dollars per person or?
Yeah, yeah, so that.
For at least basically six, um, to office.
Well, the, on that part, it would only be, that would only count up for me. That's on the town side, so the utility got around. The utility, what you want is your train.
And there's four types. Go forward, Sam. Um, police training, three hundred dollars, do we need to, can we get a tribe for training costs?
No, this is for police, like if you, uh, our court offices or our, our LMSCA offices are about fifty to seventy-five dollars per piece. Those are council. And we're pitching on adding more, more training, uh, trainings as well, so I just love to.
I was looking at last year's, we budgeted two hundred and seventy-five dollars for total personnel training, but we spent seventeen hundred. Total personnel training. You know what, we would spend like fifteen hundred dollars more than we budgeted last year.
I have to pull up the purpose of the city. I know, uh, we've done a lot more trainings last year, and I could just think how it's allocated.
Yeah, sure, I can do, we spent seventeen hundred dollars last year and only budgeted three hundred this year, this is why you guys aren't gonna have enough. Uh, the next line, he has a jail fees, as we budgeted like ten percent of what we budgeted last year, is your type of there or?
There's probably not gonna be as many jail fees, uh, we haven't paid, probably the last four or five months, we haven't really paid any jail fees, because the change in the laws and how, uh, sentencing and stuff are done, it's kind of eliminated a bunch of that.
And then my favorite question, capital outlay.
Yes.
That you said is from money, money that we spend from ransom we receive.
Yeah.
Um, and the revenue, you put a hundred and fifty thousand out for capital outlay, shouldn't those be the same?
Um, that is what the lady who showed us how to do our budget in the industry said, that is what she told us to tell in there. So that's been left on there for the last five or six years or whatever.
Is the equipment rentable or not?
Um, we really, on the town side, we don't have a.
And the reason I ask is because when we get the rent, we have to get the travel.
That would be on the outside, that's on the outside. Yeah, that's on the outside. I think there's only been one time that the town signed for it, um, because they wanted a credit card, and that's probably why we have some bucks in here. It looked like we've reached the stuff in the past, though.
Is it, is this still the same old or?
No, it's the one that they brought, it's the one that they brought.
Is it the brother brand?
It's a sharp.
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 So how long is our lease? When is that, up like July or?
I think there's like three or four months.
Sounds like they're probably fall, closer to fall.
Sounds like we're not getting very good service.
We've been fighting it. They'll, we'll tell them that there's a problem with it, and then send them a picture of the code. And then they'll be out three or four ees, and then they'll change it with something and tell them, oh, just go on the code, it's not a big deal, but then it won't print. So then, we're waiting another three days for them to check the printer, and they end up having to physically tear it down. And then there's something else, and they change it, might work for a week, they'll do the same thing.
If it's their machine, they need to exchange it for a different. And if not, then they're void, can we help them with that?
You can try calling them.
Cause if they can't fix it or replace it, then they're void at their own place. And they cut a paper channel that we couldn't get, they had to come out and fix it, took them like three days. Yeah, that's just not. Yeah. Well, that's true, I don't remember using them. I know there's an Honda company has Xerox that, uh, looks.
So I guess my only other question is just that total expenditures line, because I wasn't able to make those members come together by the. Check the form. Make sure my form was correct here, I haven't had any. The first, total personnel services and the contract labor. And then total auto expense. The, uh, total maintenance operations plus the total police maintenance operation, get that. That might communicate. And then total office jet admin expense, uniform cost, corporate insurance.
Um, when I, uh, first started, they used to do like, get shirts for the ones in office. Not only did that, that's the first year, so I was just looking at it like, uh. I had to pull insurance whenever I was. Not only did that, that's the first year, so I was just looking at it like, uh.
I was just saying, for whoever's working out. Moles, there's some of the storage stuff.
I can see.
Yeah. Trump says whatever you know. Which isn't fire retardant after the question.
Does it, my formulas right are total expenses should be more like three hundred thirty-eight thousand instead of a hundred eighty-five. Which we put this budget negative thirty thousand per year.
Well, and you're adding that's the expenditures. You've got it all the expenditures together. You take them that top number, that should be that.
Cool.
Yeah, that should be that, that off.
Um, so I, I add the other, the total personal services, the contract labor. The total auto expense, total maintenance operations, total office admin expense, uniform cost, property insurance, professional fees. Total bank charges, total utilities, total uses of subscriptions, total personal training, jail fees, police dispatch, total equipment rental. And the total other expenses, and that goes to three hundred thirty-eight thousand.
Yeah, that should be three thousand dollars.
Thirty, I think it's thirty thousand four hundred thirty-four dollars.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping for. Yeah, that's not, that's not my condition here.
So walk me through what like should be added. Because it's very costly. I have something I should.
Okay, on the, the expenditures, the personnel services. All the down to order staff, that should be on the total where it says total personnel services.
Yep.
Which I have to triple check that to make sure that the formula is right on there. Sorry to, sorry to do that problem.
I think when I, if that comes to a hundred forty-eight thousand eight hundred thirty-four dollars.
That's another one could be on the twenty-eight thousand. And then the contract labor is by itself.
Yep.
And then the auto expenses.
Total, right.
No, where it says right for contract labor versus, uh, auto expenses. All the way down to auto tag should go where it says total, uh, total auto expenses. And then, uh, once I do the, the P W A and the other one, it should go from the maintenance operations. All the way over to where it says the total maintenance operations, that should go there. And I call them, makes me checks. That should be specified. And then, um, the office and admin fees should go where the old, the total of office and admin fees are. The uniform cost, these are there. And the property insurance, because those are individuals, so those will be added to that. Um, professional fees all the way down to where it says a toll should go in that line. From, uh, bank charges down to the total bank charges, that should go in that line. Which that's the wrong. And then all the utilities, all the total utilities. And then dues and subscriptions, payroll service fee, public service fees. There should all be totals on the other side as well. The personal training, so one that has paycheck, seventy hundred has paycheck, but all of them. It's up here on the, that column. The LPs, the dispatch is right there. Uh, the equipment rental goes in that space. Which we can actually take out the equipment rental we have. Then all that should be added up right there.
Three hundred and thirty-three thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty cents.
What's that?
Three hundred and thirty-three thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty cents. Now, keeping like to, I have a cell adding some, summing up other things, so it might involve a few things that's all around the issues. Total personnel services, like that one forty-eight.
That's on this. Are the old supposed to be a summary or those column?
Now, are you, because you have your total payroll taxes number, which is a combination of the general payroll fund and the labor and payroll. So if you add those two together along with that total, total payroll taxes, like you're doubling your number.
That's, that's a total of that section. That's a total of that section. So the bold ones are just the total of the ones above it.
So you have your, your big bold and then you have your, your smaller bold.
Right.
So your big bold should be the, the total, right?
Right.
Of the smaller.
No, that's what I'm saying. Like if one, two, three, four, five, six. And then when that says total, that's just the sum of those totals. That's what I'm.
Because I think you're.
I don't like, my math ain't method. I was better at that school. That makes sense. That's where the fifty-one and thirty-six.
Any other questions?
No, but.
Figure it out.
Yeah, it looks like it's, uh, for you love when you, when you add those up. This is right there. When I add those up, this is, this is what it's coming up on. This is what it actually is.
That's where it is.
On the personal, uh, total personal services, what did you say your, the total that you got was?
I got a hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred fifty-four. I got that by adding together the fifty-one thousand. The thirty-six thousand and then fifty-five thousand two sixteen. So total payroll taxes, the total police payroll, the P W A payroll, and the working as com. That's how I got that. I don't know if that's everything I should have, uh. Because it looked like the payroll taxes up above my inclusion that fifty-one thousand, so I didn't know.
And adding some of these up, it's the formula that's on Excel that is messed up. Because even the total of the, the total payroll taxes. That's on. That should be fifteen thousand six hundred.
Okay, with all that included?
Yeah.
So what are the librarian's hours going to be?
Yep.
That's right.
You have two one fifty-four, oh forty-three, one fifty-four, oh four-three. Uh-huh.
What are the librarian's hours going to be? He said when they're, when the, uh.
I can only say what it used to be when we were full time, which was nine to two every day. And there's one day that we had to work two hours in the afternoon. And they rotated on Saturdays. I don't know what the board.
Yeah, we were open every Saturday.
Every Saturday, yeah. I don't know what the board.
From nine to two.
So, yeah, so I guess looking at, at payroll.
And then if you guys were thinking about, um. Came up in a conversation yesterday is if you were going to, the board was going to hire a librarian.
Not with a budget thirty-five thousand, huh?
Well, I think when that formula gets fixed, it's not going to be. But that's what the columns I have already. It's the formula that's on Excel. It's messed up.
Right.
So I just have to go in there.
I'm just looking at my formula. So I can put in there.
How much time are we going to be putting in after school hours with kids who might actually need it?
How they've done it in the past is during, like the school year, they've been open later in the day. And during the summer, they've been open earlier in the day.
Or when you're nine to two or two to six.
Yeah.
So when I was, when I worked, Samuel worked nine to two and I worked two to six. I was, uh, that's the same.
Do we know how much she makes now?
Um, really? Uh, not really. No, it's actually a lot of dollars now.
We changed your hours a couple of years ago, too.
Uh, I think so.
We actually changed your hours at the part timer and they overlapped on.
Yeah.
Of course, we're going to build and start to keep our hours up.
Yeah, so generally we're s- every month eighty, eighty hours a month as she does. We pay eleven dollars an hour and then we're maybe over the librarian's budget by five hundred and sixty dollars. All right, because she works Monday to Tuesday. And doesn't count for long any extra hours. We're sitting building. I'd love to, but I'm still going to pay thirty-five thousand. So I, I would like to help them one. That way we know we've been paid. No, but, um, if we pay, if we double it, then that's going to be twice.
How many?
Thirty-five hours a week, I think, because they're just.
No, I mean just total.
Okay, so then what do we cut from so that we can double it?
No, I'm just saying that that, um, now, she was almost done with that.
So my salary was paid by a grant. It wasn't paid by the city. And I, and it was for a year and a half.
That was for my break position as a employee.
Uh, yeah. Probably.
Sandy was a bit, um, fine.
Oh, yes.
The grants.
They're all about that.
Yeah.
There are probably ten, ten thirty.
That would be one thing to see how much you're gonna get back. What do we, and what we gotta do to get it? Because if it's just sitting there doing nothing, that's not happening anybody. What are the audits available?
Uh, it's just, uh, the, the bill of ownership audits. They already have the stuff for the first two and they did send a list of, um, a couple of like QuickBooks reports that they, they needed. But there's a way for them to, us to get them a code to get access to our QuickBooks and to get our stuff out there. So that's what they're, as far as QuickBooks. Um, and then there's a couple of other specialty papers that I had to get, and which is all case study stuff. They, um, listed that.
Where were we? I had like four years, two, three years ago.
Um, we're calling the working on the fifth year of getting it off.
And every year ago, we used money, right?
They will only call me thirteen years.
Yeah.
Yeah, you didn't have any orders, we hired, gave these orders and they just dropped the roll. And didn't touch, didn't touch them. We've switched numerous times trying to get these orders done and. I haven't seen people work like that before.
I guess what concerns me too is we're budgeting a hundred and fifty thousand dollar income of grants unless they is ghosting us. Where's that happen to you from?
Again, the issue that I can mention tonight is this grant writer is supposed to be paid on a, the county. Uh, the grant on, on some of those.
She only gets paid if, um, she gets. If we get the grant, otherwise she does not get it.
And the Grant Writers Association considers that very unethical. It's supposed to be, uh, agreed. And they're supposed to be, it's like a, but that's neither here nor there.
But that's, I'm just looking at that number.
So what do we have on this room? Where do we have this room? Uh, that has to be with the, uh, investigation. State for your investigation is missing.
Those are our monthly fees.
Yeah, we got eight months.
I, I know, but I say hopefully we don't.
How often do we go to the bank?
Um, they were wanting us to go every day. And that's, I think, what I may have, uh, targeted for is every single day, uh, to go with the new combined rates that we have. But that doesn't mean, like, that way it's not, we're not gonna go without.
Right. Where's this? It's there to counter.
Four, four.
Where are tires?
Yes.
Insurance.
Yeah.
That time I got a two thirty-six. I have one. Total, all those areas. You get to look at the corrected. Two thirty-six zero.
Make another six dollars. Build next time.
Just kind of run the right knee cruise.
Yep, I jacked it up on another six dollars.
There's no way we can just want to see our receipt. Serious, not serious. We're not, we're not, how should we know?
Not either.
Very terrible. Seventy euro, we're on C R.
Yeah, at least when I was a painter, he could switch back to it.
And like if there's one publicly built electric system, that's. Sometimes it's true.
Yeah, it was weird because you don't want to choose which one. I'm like, you're feeding me from the same line. Oh, we're in. That's all this, that's all this made into these.
Tire now, right?
Yeah, the problem comes in play at the top, the four units are on. So it's adding, it's not adding up everything, the columns are different. Which I didn't catch really on this.
So do you think then we might, because there, is this on the agenda for Tuesday? Where we can fix these and smooth that by the front?
Well, we can, we can actually go over, they said we're not gonna get dig for something, it's impossible. I would like to state that.
Well, I, I might be able to find the numbers once the formula is correct, I can look at the actual. Your right numbers.
Is everything else added up correctly except the top part? Top says words.
That's a question.
Here is.
Which top part?
There's now the expenditures, the expenditures and formulas are on. From the personal services to, um, actually it's the personal services, how their, how their formulas is not calculating correctly.
So then it does, should include the payroll taxes there at the end of that year?
Yeah, it should include all of the, like, the personal services all the way to the total personal services, but the numbers that they're adding. Like what on the new right knee view, it's not adding up. Like this formula that's on Excel is not adding the correct numbers out. So it's not totally incorrect. Cause it, it shows right here the total is one twenty-two, seven twenty, and actually from the calculations I did twice, it's one fifty-four, oh forty-three. But all of these other ones aren't correct, the smaller ones from, uh, contract labor all the way until, um, um, the total means operations. Like I never know, um, it's mis-calculated, the formula's messed up on there.
So when you calculate the expenses, you include the hundred thousand for the capital outlay?
Yes, those are added at both sides.
Cause I don't know how you got two thirty-six, cause I.
Well, that's, that's, I'm just talking about the total before you get down to that part. Cause that, that total is messed up before you get down to that part.
Total is messed up, yeah. And this blank column is fresh, you could buy out.
If you're first on, I'll be accelerating.
No, let's take. Do you have any on name?
So the, the formula needs to be corrected.
Yeah. So are, is it, is there, are we able to get this to talk about on Tuesday?
You can do an amendment, um.
Can't we do it in post amendment? Will we be?
I can even, I can even do an amendment to my post day. Either way, we can just do an amendment and if majority of the board confirms that, then we can.
Okay. Now, the hard question is, when would you have a chance to go, is corrected by, since it means Tuesday.
I have to go on Saturday, um, for, we're doing the vet clinic at Town Hall tomorrow.
That's right.
I'm gonna be there for three hours anyway, so I can do that then and email it out to everybody.
Okay. Well, you guys think that I'd like to function that way?
Yeah. Yeah, cause she, like she said, it's none of these numbers right here are right.
Now, while I'm doing this, do you want to change anything? Adjust anything?
Well, I think we need to bump the, um, library prop. Cause it's what's, it's eleven dollars an hour.
So then this would be hours a month, which is a hundred eighty times twelve months. Was it, was it in twenty-three, twenty-three L S O? Was it twenty-three L S O, we mentioned that we could have, so I'm like, that's all there.
That's ten thousand five hundred and sixty, just for what she has now, so. So I think we need to bump that up at least to that, so we can compare for the hours she's working now.
Right. You said five sixty?
Yeah, ten five six zero. And I only, I only got that, I just went on the website and just counted all the hours in it, in it, we've been hypnotized for. Can we leave the uniform cross off this year?
Yeah, that's what I'm about to ask.
Say what?
Technically it'd be four point three.
Four point three what?
Be four point three.
Just so you know. And you're on both sides of the paddle too, so.
I mean, what the hell, yeah.
So are we gonna remove the uniform cost?
It was ten of it, wasn't it?
Yeah.
So then do we need to vote to adjourn the amendment, see if it passed?
Yeah.
Okay, so then I move that we, we add more of the budget conversation on the Tuesday's regular meeting. In which case then we will have you corrected budgets to look at.
It's here, it's July first meeting.
How do I?
It's here, it's July first meeting.
Sandy seconds it.
Once you get that, Brittany, can we put the entire budget, post it instead of just the, the highlights that we had before? That way everybody can see all of this.
Where do you wanna post them?
This on Town Hall Door where you had.
Make a motion, will you, John?
Second.
Richard, yes.
Ah, John, your turn.
We have more problems with the actual computer plus one, so.
Yeah, I had the hand, I had all this one, so.
Okay, Thomas Ryan, Board of Trustees, Utility Special Meeting, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Now eight oh three P M., First Baptist Church, one twenty-two North, First Street, Triumphant. Call the order, roll call.
Sandy here, Jenna here.
Richard here. Consideration, discussion, action, adopting the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six physical year budget for the utility department.
What is the very first line on this, said the hundred and forty-four thousand dollar revenue? There's nothing to the left that actually says what it is. That's where all the pizza parties come from.
That's like a guitar. That was the total, like sewer and water cells.
Look down.
I think that was a total, um, like sewer and water cells.
Revenue.
Yeah, that's what they're on the entire. And I think that's where the, like, fees and the connect fees are also in torn with that as well.
Okay, so that's the, uh, revenue coming in from the water?
Yeah. Why is sewer?
Sewer is about four lengths down.
Oh, yeah, water, yeah.
Uh, royalty income, where are we getting royalty from?
They're getting, um, what is that, asset?
Asset, um.
It's like land royalty from somewhere.
Yes. Sign royalties from asset, I don't, it's.
I'm not.
It's a mineral rights, I believe.
Hmm, gotcha.
Question, one real quick question, if the water is a hundred and forty-four thousand with the garbage manager? And that garbage for the sewer manager?
Well, I'm thinking, I think that the, because on the report, when we pulled the QuickBooks, it's not separated like it.
Yeah, it's supposed to.
Yeah, John's been talking about this.
But basically one forty-four would be sewer and water.
Sewer and water, yeah. Cause I don't think she separated it out, but I'm gonna start separating that out going forward.
So that one forty-four is for both sewer and?
And water.
Okay.
That would make more sense.
Yeah, we can, we can apply any that was separated.
Yeah. And it needs to be separated out, so.
Yeah.
So then payroll expense, that would include John and future what, uh, utility operator and Justin?
No, Justin would be under contract labor.
Is that payroll expense enough for a full-time utility clerk and a full-time utility operator?
Um, I believe that's what it, on our system, that's what it showed that was pulling up with, uh, reports. Which it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt, um, to, well, it wouldn't hurt to add some more to it. Um, just because there was spots in there, a month or two here or there, that we didn't have anybody. So they're plowing that income added into it.
So we're paying thirty thousand dollars a year for the garbage, but we're only making five thousand dollars a year on garbage?
So again, she didn't separate it out. And so that's what is in QuickBooks. She didn't always separate it like garbage, water, sewer, like.
When we have a payment, uh, when we have a payment made, and anytime there's a customer and they make a payment and we enter that to the system, the new system, we can print out a report, how's that break down on it?
Yeah.
But we usually can't get it till end of the month, so we've already had deposits that's brought to us. So when she would enter into QuickBooks, she would just enter it as that customer, how much they paid, and she would just classify it as water or sewer. Um, how we did it before a few years ago is that we had to, we didn't have the same system, the utility system that we have now. So they actually had to go in on their deposits and put in exactly how much they paid on water, sewer, and garbage. Doing it that way is how we should have been doing it, cause it breaks it down for like this time of year, it gives us exactly the accurate money. Just like on, uh, connect fees and late fees, cause we've connected, we've collected both of those, but it's not broken down up here.
Is that something we can start doing, the way forward?
Yeah, 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 I'm just going forward, starting this month.
Okay.
And it's, it's pretty easy, it's, those reports would break it all down.
Okay, so. Um, the attorney fee, you have nine thousand dollars, should that only be forty-five hundred?
Yeah, that was supposed to be changed last time, when we talked about that at the last meeting.
And then the audit?
It should be, uh, I think if it's ten thousand, some bits will be.
Yeah, there's ten thousand.
I put ten thousand on his too, his reasonable split, whatever price of the audit is, but if he's able to do all four of them, I just want to have, yeah.
Man, I don't see anything listed under utilities. They're not paying utilities out of the.
The electric costs.
So if my math is correct, it looks like we're gonna have eighty thousand, about forty thousand dollars. Is that close to what you have?
No, it seems to be accurate.
So do we want to try to bump up the year, try to get a detract utility operator?
So that work on how hard trying to hiring a qualified person, is that how that would be, no insurance, nothing like that?
And training's been, training costs have been, seventeen hundred dollars training, Michael last year, I think he had fifty dollars for this year or something like that.
Is that something that we could, if we hire somebody with all the credentials, we wouldn't need it trained? But if we hired somebody without the credentials, could we take the cost of the training out of their first year salary? And then we just, just need to worry about?
Town center.
We never have?
And the chances that you get somebody that's fully qualified license is about zero, is that?
Okay, so you're saying there's a chance?
Very little, but.
Um, yeah, that's, that's a good question, so breakdown of our, what, what was Michael making, what, he was making sixteen there on?
Uh, yeah.
For a forty hour weekend. We're at the very, very bottom of the, of the bottom of that range.
And that's what we're gonna translate, leave, go, but right.
So could we maybe bump that up to forty thousand or whatever round number that would be? Like add ten thousand dollars to the payroll budget, through that towards the water utility operator, maybe we can let it stay more than a year?
Isn't it, they give up that if they come with no license, they won't pay for the license, if they have to stay a certain amount of time, if they don't stay that for a long time.
That's fair enough, yeah.
Good.
Listen, maybe they get a raise after they get the certifications too.
We usually.
There's not very much though.
Right, I mean, we do give some raise after they get their, take their test, get their C license or E license.
So then Michael, then the raise that we gave him, up to the very bottom of the range?
Kind of curve, getting certified, then kind of, if you reimburse the stage, it's like, trying to get their sign up, so it's three months, six months, nine months. So they gotta be there a whole year before they get reimbursed. Otherwise, you know, but they, they said if they leave before the year, first year, they may not get it back. That way, I would say it's kind of a two for got you. Because if you say it, six, six hundred dollars, three months they get, two hundred, six months they get, two hundred, nine months they get, three hundred. If they leave before the year, they gotta get it back. Yeah, there's, it's hard to, 'cause a lot of that happens with, with drinking companies too, it's the same thing. Because they get certification of a company based work, then they bail out.
What would you guys think about shooting like, bumping the payroll expense ten thousand and then making the decision to go up eight thousand, forty thousand a year? And that would get two thousand for tax liabilities, work and home insurance? Uh, about five thousand, forty to forty five thousand, positive.
And that's kind of goes along with what our, what we're gonna be, what we're supposed to talk to the board about, like our great study that we've done, to show like the town where our system is, where we need to go, how we need to get there. Part of that is a, like, 'cause we're at the lowest end, like the bottom of the barrel on how much we charge for our water, sewer services and trash. Um, like a rate study, one of those things, you get a rate, those rates, to where it's a meaningful rate, so that then we're just gonna get paid for it. Because that is one of the challenges, the ones like that.
I think that's possibly maybe able, if we're still having all the water problems, you can even tell the operator, and then ask them to raise the rates.
I think it's a thousand.
It's a great. And would be too excessive?
And I think another thing to consider too is your uniform cost. Just because of the, the nature of their job, I think the, the town should supply.
We did, in the past.
Well, in the past, we've always supplied them a pair of like dip overalls and pair of boots. Uh, like, yeah, coveralls and a jacket.
And then if they're getting re-placed, if they're washed, or whatever, that's all that does.
Do we have enough to justify a cent tosses excessive?
Well, that was just a, a thought, a, you know.
A uniform service would be.
Yeah.
I would think they could take their laundry own one.
Yeah, so the service would do for one, like.
I just wanna.
Well, yeah, but as far as waiting, they may take a sewage cover, or something, or something, or something.
Yeah, but at some point, you know, they're, they gotta expect what they're doing if they're applying for the job.
Usually just the coveralls, the coat, and boots.
So I didn't see that gear here, was that budgeted for?
Um, it doesn't look like it here. I would say.
You know about how much it costs to get it?
Um, well, I know how much it costs for the, like the boots are, a pair of like boots is probably like a hundred and thirty dollars, but the overalls would be closer to it, so it's, it could be some jacket, a hundred and twenty dollars.
But, I see.
We usually just, we just send them to, uh, out with it.
Yeah, well, we're talking about insulated coveralls during the cold weather.
So, uh, so do you think a thousand dollars would be enough to get, that would give them a couple, a couple pairs of coveralls, a couple pairs of boots?
Well, even those coveralls, I think they probably only make like one coverall, but just like even like one pants and like a work shirt.
Yeah.
Like some work shirts or whatever.
I, I just thought, even a thousand, I don't know if that's too much. For the, for the year. That breakdown to each other's month?
Yeah.
You go five hundred?
I kind of, I, I kind of think it's a thousand dollars. Actually, that's probably enough, I think it's at the price of also everything.
I just like, consider it twelve, so you've got seven hundred, ten, ninety, get it, proceeds again. With the, with the low.
Right.
'Cause I know like, for cold, for cold.
Right, so that way they're not going.
Well, I can drop twenty seven dollars a month.
Yeah, well, I had to go.
Either by, if it's fine, or I bought two shirts for forty five dollars.
So it'd be a hundred dollars a month clothing allowance? That seems pretty high.
What they have to account for head time, so if they're not spending it, then again.
And I understand like some shirts may be like fifteen dollars and some may be forty five, and might think that that's ridiculous. But like that ten dollar shirts or fifteen dollar shirts gonna last like two washes, or, like the quality of those clothes, how long are they gonna last? So you might as well pay forty five dollars for a good quality shirt that's gonna last them a couple of months. Then just.
Well, I, I bought the Walmart version of the Carhartt jacket a couple of years ago. Which is fine. And they're less than forty five.
But they also put the chemicals in something they, that they deal with, the chemicals is gonna break, like if it gets splashed on them, that's gonna break.
Right, so we did, well, as far as messing with chemicals, we, we have to provide some form of P V E. So whether it be elbow needs to have gloves or aprons or.
Which we need to start looking.
No, they don't, don't use them, that's their problem.
A good pair, a good pair of coveralls costs about two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, so.
Good.
Twelve hundred?
I mean, that's not even the highest ones.
Yeah. But I mean, they'll also have to stand up if they're standing in, in waist deep water for four hours.
Yeah, these are for extreme cold.
Yeah. I just remember, I don't remember if it was you or Mary Lee, there was a picture on Facebook with some, somebody from the old board that was standing there with.
Yeah, that, yeah, that like, because they were up to water all year, and it was cold.
Yeah, some, some of those like the nine ones, probably eschrems, I can't, they'd have to be like a duck.
Is it twelve hundred?
I would say.
Others will react.
Yes.
Washed, insulation.
Just the Carhartt type.
Is that right, you're on what, is it twelve hundred? Um, safety equipment, we don't have any money budgeted for that.
Um, we need to.
What do we use for P V E? Is it just goggles, gloves, and apron?
Um, yeah, pretty basic. We've started with, um, with department report and stuff that we have. We need to like bump up to like the next level according to O R W rate, 'cause we're not really efficient in the ones that we have.
On the chemicals, be the.
Coring, yeah, and then just the general, the sewage that you.
Yeah, you gotta be protected from that.
We've already ordered eye wash stations, they've already been, there's one at City Hall, one in the truck, there's one in each of the wellhouses, and there's one at the shop.
So what we really need to budget for then is just the actual physical wearables? Okay, what do we need to think about for that?
I know that we're probably gonna need, I'd probably say three sets of like the gloves and probably some kind of hat with the face shields.
Face shields.
And then like a smock of some sort, at least three sets of each of those, because we'll need one in each wellhouse, and one with a pickup.
So under safety equipment, we're gonna add, right now it's at zero. Six lines on top.
So what are we gonna put in there then?
Sometimes such stuff is expensive.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you probably gonna have to match that, ten or twelve, put it, put it to the other. But, I don't know.
That, that are for the clothing allowance?
I mean, I, I was gonna think more like fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
Let's say, chemicals, food, uh, safety glasses, gloves, respirators, tank of clothing, I can't call.
And that gives us.
Your basic science lab outfit.
Yeah. About forty five of impromptu. So I notice there's no capital outlay on the utility side for expenses.
It's gonna be.
Without a hundred thousand.
I'll get one ten and get the, put some stuff in, get those ones that are missing. And we'll do that and double check each other.
And then talk about it on Tuesday then? Okay, I move that we, we table the budget approval until Tuesday, and then if I have to double check the formulas, then. I'm a digger.
Sandy seconds it.
Richard, yes?
You think you'd be able to have those on Saturday too?
Yeah, we, yeah, it doesn't take very long.
A motion to adjourn?
Maybe my last is way adjourned.
My second?
Richard, yes?
Seven point eight seven.
Richard, do you have a Ranger boot?
We do, Rangers, yeah, yeah, so we just got, we just got an update.
Okay.
Yeah, we just got one.
Way, working.
Very expensive.
Well, I'm gonna say that, you need an idea, so, it's like so close.
Basically, you get a thing, science lab.
Yeah. And I can get with Travis.
The goggles are great.
Safety Solutions is a really good place to buy stuff like this.
I just like dessert.
Oh, yeah, Rangers is too, Rangers is like, there's stuff really good.
But.
Rubber glove, like a high bomb rubber glove.
Yeah, yeah.
Elbow or whatever. In addition, now that you can at least need apron shield for a splash, like, big old big screw in, and if it gets hot, and you have chlorine thing, get ice for it, or whatever it needs to. They, they still, even with the face shield, it should still work.
Well, that's what I said.
Oh, yeah, goggles.
Yeah.
No, you don't necessarily goggles.
Some of the stuff, like I was telling, uh, it's congested. Rubber brake, just to wrap around, safety glasses, kinda like the ones that I wear, and those are, they are, like, right. Slightly smaller than ever. They're clear, there's yellow and black, like two little spaces. So, uh, some of the racing stuff, I guess it's smashing, it's less than five foot away. We, we could go up there with fifty bucks and get.
Yeah, they have, they, they're personally, I'll get ahold of Travis too, um, from.
Plus being cheap, they losing the rate, who can?
That's all, yeah. I'll get a Travis here and see if there's anything that's like required, or like.
Start a rate or, or whatever, yeah.
And I'll see.
'Cause I, I know you can get the, the bump hats, the hard hats, you can get the face shields, you can get the goggles, you can get the glasses, you can get the gloves.
But are they of the right?
Right.
Of safety specs, these stuffs?
Yeah, they're, they're all anti, uh, whatever it is, uh, because I buy the insulated ones for fueling the truck.
So, if they are capable, nothing stuff?
I have your pop.
I know they'll be in there Monday, I, I asked you when it's gonna come out, I know he's gonna be.
I saw the yellow, I mean, I can't do. I could go back.
Oh, God.
Yeah, and he said that he'll be on, on Monday.
Yeah.
So I don't know exactly what time, but whenever he calls, I can shoot a text out.
Yeah, it's kind of fun to go see it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, once, once we know, initially, just grab.
Okay.
You got that air foot backwards.
They said no touch it.
Oh, okay, well, that's because I got that.
Send you a spreadsheet.
I would love a spreadsheet.
Could be, uh, none of my totals, like.
Do you ever find that remote?
I know, like, I know how to, I'm doing a spreadsheet.
It's down in the cabinet.
I know how to do everything, but I don't know.
So you made your trip back to Tulsa, okay?
Probably.
My dad was the first one that opened the box.
You make it back from Tulsa, so.
Maybe it's an eye, I'll just see an eye.
Right after a hot, if the sun start coming out, of course, so.